Well, good afternoon, everybody. This is Carrie Leishman. This is very new for us at the Delaware Restaurant Association to do a virtual town hall meeting. And I'm standing here next to John Boykin at BHI Insurance and his team. I want to first thank John and the team here at BHI for helping us put this all together. So technology, you know, it's my 20th year running the DRA and the technology portion, I'm not up to speed with. So I want to again, thank everybody. And boy, if it wasn't a good time to be a member of the Delaware Restaurant Association, now is the time. So I wanted to update all of you, leave some time for question and answers at the end. But I also want to say in the beginning that it's, all of this is weighed, I get emotional when I talk, but it's weighed very heavily on me, what's happened and it's only been, you know, less than four weeks since you all were shut down. So there's not a lot of answers I have on everything today, so I hope you'll be there with me. I do have also on the call, well, I want to tell you first that also next week, on the 15th, we'll be doing another webinar with our legal team and our legal counsel with Saul Ewing to answer any sort of legal questions or more questions that you may have. So I think, John, let's go to the next slide. I want to just tell you also who is on the call with us today because we have some of our elected officials and our team members. We have, I'm really happy to have the Secretary of Labor, Secretary Saran Kade on the line with me today and Maria Clyde from B&amp;H Insurance to talk about any sort of human resources or HR questions you may have. We also have Damian DiStefano from the Delaware Division of Small Business on the line to give you some updates and answer some questions on loans and specifically the HELP program. Not in the pictures with you, we have Jamie Mack and Sandy Spiegel with the Division of Public Health. Some of your questions that came over to me are revolving around reopening and public health, so they can answer any questions as they know it or not know it today. And then also on the call is Barry Watson, who is part of our strike team and our lobbyist that's been helping us with their team as we meet with elected officials. So again, I want to thank everybody for coming on and these are sort of our subject experts that can help you today. We might want to go to the next slide. I think what I want to talk about today and begin is just to do a little bit of a DRA staff introduction. You know, so many of you on the call are always with us when we talk to our elected officials or when we're doing work behind the scenes. So I think it's important for you to know who's doing what within the association and who you can contact in the different areas of expertise that they cover. We're also going to talk a little bit about what's happened in the last four weeks as from our perspective at the Delaware Restaurant Association. I'll do just a brief national update. I just got off the phone with the National Restaurant Association earlier today and a lot of questions seem to be coming over specifically about the PPP program. So I'll just talk a little bit about what's happening there. And then, you know, there'll be a next phase, right? What does it look like? When are we going to reopen? We don't know that yet, but we can talk about it. And then are there also some specific asks that we have next? So we'll start and I'll set it up for that. So we'll go into the next slide. So I want you guys, if you already don't know, our dream team at the Delaware Restaurant Association, I have to tell you, we've been working around the clock since about four and a half weeks ago, you know, to help come to sort of the aid of the industry. We have Ray Lynn Grogan, who's our Director of Education and our ProStar Coordinator on the phone today, Alexa Legori, our Event Specialist and does a lot of our social media. Myself is the President and CEO of both the DRA and our 501(c)(3) Educational Foundation. Many of you talked to Ray Witchard, our Membership Manager, and ones that have been sort of emailing you and calling you throughout the last couple of weeks. And then many of you have seen information from Karen Stauffer in our office, who's our Director of Communications. In the last couple of weeks, we've sort of pivoted the work that we've been doing. Ray Lynn has really pivoted our ProStar program, which she usually was working on, and really started coming around with our industry DE Eats, our fundraising program for workers in the industry. She also is spearheads all of our education and training for the association. Right now, if you are not taking, especially if you're doing carryout and even as we reopen, I hope that you are all taking advantage of some of the free training that the National Restaurant Association has afforded to us. And we hope that all of your people are going through the Serve Safe Food Handler Program. It's never free, but it's free for the next month, I think, so that I hope that all your staff are taking that. Ray Lynn can talk a little bit about that at a later time. Alexa on our team, who is really coalescing our industry's social media right now and getting out information through the channels of Instagram and some of the Facebook, but she's really doing well at looking at everybody's social media, finding it, promoting all the specials that you all are doing on carryout. So with anything to do with social media and meetings and information requests, I would funnel everything to Alexa. Everybody's email is under, so I hope that you guys will take advantage of this. And of course, I've been fielding all of the advocacy questions. We have, I've been the point person with our state and federal legislative representatives, the point person for our governor's call meetings, our meetings with our congressmen and our senators, our Congresswoman and senators, and also with my state counterparts at the national level. I am part of a wonderful group of people across the country that run state restaurant associations. And I can assure you, if you have restaurants in other states or you know of people in other states, we are all cut from the same cloth and we're working tirelessly. In fact, that's why there's no video on this today because if you could see the way, I do not look like that picture right now because we've just been, we've been working so hard and it shows. Ray on the call, her email's below. Any questions you have specifically, if you are an ally or allied members are calling in, offering services and benefits, or you are a restaurant that needs to get information directly, she can get those questions to myself or members of my team and she can answer and get that out to you in a timely manner. And then Karen really has led the pack in information, I think for the last three and a half weeks, almost daily to the membership, our e-news is, places that they can access further information, whether it's through the association or through our partners at the National Restaurant Association. Whenever we have updates on new executive orders from the governor's office, we try to get that out to you in the most timely manner as we can. When we get it, we really try to get it out to you so you can make the best possible decisions for your business. So I wanted you to have that upfront. And for those of you that are not board members or that don't usually communicate with us, these are the people that are working around the clock on your behalf and plan on to it for the next coming months, so weeks and months. We'll go to the next slide, I think, John, too. We also am urging you to sign on to all of our social media channels, whether it's through Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or sign up for our e-newsletters if you're not getting them. Anybody within your office as well that wants those e-newsletters, they can sign up to get information. I know that multiple restaurants have multiple people getting that information, so I urge you to put as many people from your organizations on to get that information. You know, it is amazing that we are the largest conveners of restaurants in the state. And so we are looked to a lot of times by our elected officials to get information out to you. So as quickly as we can get information out to our 2,000 restaurants, the better it is for all of us. So it's important that you connect with us at the DRA. Go to the next slide. Thanks. And the work that we've been doing, and we always do, but especially in the last four weeks, so we've been, you know, we have really put together a strong task force for advocacy and mostly through, so you know how it is, through the members of our Board of Directors. We have 30 of the state's top restaurateurs from all walks of life and all corners of the state, from small independent, very small restaurants up to franchise operators, all independently owned restaurant groups that are working with me, with our elected officials to advocate on your behalf. And you should be very proud really of the work that they do. The Chairman of our Boards is Scott Cammer from Sodel Concepts, and he's been doing an amazing job working with me and partnering with me to educate elected officials on anything that affects our industry. So the advocacy work we're doing right now is on all levels. It's within the state agencies, it's with our legislature, and it's with our governor's office directly. So that is part of the work we've been doing in the last four weeks on your behalf. We've also been sourcing and advocating on available funding, loans and grants, both state and federal programs. I know Damian is on the call. He can give a bit of an update in a little while on what's happening through the Division of Small Business and through the HELP program. And then for businesses, through our allied members, we have access to industry experts and tools and resources for you all. Maria Clyde, who with BHI handles human resources and is a partner with us on human resource training, is on the call for your questions. But we have sort of an industry of allied professionals, not just restaurants, that could offer tools and resources for you as well. And then of course, our biggest concern, you know, quite humbling, I was blown away in the last four weeks from hearing from all of you that really what has been the most important message that restaurateurs have been getting out to our elected officials is relief for workers. And that is something that's been really, here, he's not in here, I'm sorry. Sorry, guys, somebody's having a hard time getting in, our Secretary of Labor, so we'll be, we'll be trying to access him pretty well. So we'll give a little bit more of details on what we're doing for employees and what's next as far as for businesses as we go in further. So let's go to the next slide, too, John. A little bit from a national update, listen, we've now been through three COVID legislation, pieces of legislation on a national level. You know, the first one was mainly centered around emergency preparedness and funding. And then COVID-2 was the Families First Act, which was a negotiation between the White House and Democratic leaders and really was not very advantageous at all for the restaurant industry, but it's something that we had to, we had to negotiate in. And that was to get to COVID-3, which is kind of where all of our questions are stemming from now, specifically the PPP program. And it's amazing to me that the PPP was passed just six days ago and already that we're seeing critical flaws in it. And, you know, many of the components of the PPP program simply are just not compatible with our industry right now. Today, the National Restaurant Association sent a letter to legislative leadership in the House and Senate urging changes to the PPP program. And much of the changes are coming from some of the questions that you're already sending to me today, so we can talk a little bit about it when I read questions. The Democrats, or the Senate is supposed to have a full vote today to increase fundings. The Republican leadership wants a simple $250 billion increase for small business for the PPP. But the Democrats are looking for more state and local funding as well as funding for hospitals. So what happens there, because there is divide, I don't know this for sure, but it's going to be my prediction that there's going to be a stalemate on this vote today. So I'm not sure that anything is going to happen, but there's a lot of questions we have, that the reason it's not working, you know, the extension of the eight-week period, we're looking at to, they're looking to extend from eight weeks to December 20th. We are asking to change the 75% for payroll to more like 50% of payroll. There's a lot of things that we're trying to do within PPP through our national partners. So, you know, I don't have all the answers on that. I just want to let you know that it's in flux. But there are some things I can answer today. And when we get through the question and answer period, I will answer to the best of my knowledge. The problem is, it could be changed on a dime. So if you haven't applied for PPP, a lot of the questions are asking me what to do. I want to let you know that I cannot tell you what to do for your business. Everybody's different, but I will tell you that money's running out. So if you're trying to time the PPP funds based on eight weeks, I would talk to your accountant and maybe I would think about doing it before the money runs out. So I think it will get extended, but we just don't know. So let me go to the state level. It was about four weeks ago that we started working with the governor's office as they were starting to think about shutting down businesses for coronavirus. It was a very tense time, three and a half weeks ago over the weekend, in essence, when they shut down restaurants on a Monday. We had little notice and it was, there was a time when we almost got shut out of the governor's office. I want to say that we didn't and we had two phone calls and now we're on weekly phone calls with the governor's office, which I have to tell you, from an industry standpoint, I don't know too many associations in the state of Delaware right now who are on the phone weekly with their governor's office, weekly with Senator Coons, and weekly, we had a call last week with Congresswoman Blunt Rochester. And we do not want that weekly call to go away. I think it's vital for an organization and an industry to have conversation with the governor weekly and to be able to articulate what it's doing for our industry. We are, we are in constant communication with his staff and his inner circle and I'll call out, I just want to tell Secretary Saran Kade that any time that we need to get with him, to talk to him, to ask questions, he has been available to me and to us. And a lot of these early questions in the first two weeks have revolved around the Department of Labor and getting help to our employees. So I have to tell you that I'm very grateful for that. We've also worked with the governor's office to make sure that restaurants remain on the essential business list for at least carryout and takeout. And I don't see that going anywhere and I'm hoping not. So we are frontline feeders right now to people that can't get food, people that are in the healthcare system and people who just don't cook for themselves. So at this point, food is frontline and we are community feeders and we've continued to communicate that. The communication coming back from the governor's office, however, is to make sure that you are doing all you can to socially distance your customers if they're coming in for carryout, making sure that you're, and we already know this, we've communicated that our industry already is probably one of the best industries when it comes to safety and sanitation. But as much as we can socially distance employees and socially distance people coming in for carryout, it's something that his office continues to want us to talk about with our industry. Listen, I said, and you know what, I'm going to unmute you, Secretary Saran, I want to unmute you to talk a little bit about unemployment because initially you worked with us on the waiting period. Is he in? All right, I'm going to unmute you, Saran, to just give a little update on what's happening with unemployment because I did get a couple of questions about unemployment. Number one is, and I think I know the answer, but has the $600 a week from the federal unemployment started to flow here in Delaware? And a question had come in, and I guess I'll just ask it now, is that $600 retroactive to the original layoff date or is it quote unquote, "from this point on"? Actually, I think he's calling in. He's not in yet, so we'll ask him. And maybe I'll pivot to Damian because the one thing that we have also done was to really appeal to the governor's office for grants and help for the restaurant industry. The Division of Small Business started with a $1.5 million cap for HELP loan for up to $10,000 a month for zero interest. Is he in? Sorry. But we, it wasn't working for us. There wasn't, you know, we had to communicate with the Division of Small Business that, you know, this is a cash flow industry and $1.5 million was not, was not really helping very much. Actually, Saran is in. Saran, I'm going to unmute you and can you first do a little bit of sort of an update on unemployment? I don't know if you heard, but I asked about whether the feds are, the $600 is coming in for workers and is that $600 retroactive to the original layoff date or is it kind of from this point forward?
How you doing? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
So the $600 benefit for traditional employees went into effect this, earlier this week. Folks who received their payment on Monday or Tuesday may not have received the full amount with the $600, $600 included, but they'll receive a separate dispersment at the end, before the end of the week, should have to this point, many of them now. Everyone who received their dispersment from yesterday on received a full dispersment of whatever their state unemployment was as well as the added $600 benefit on top of that. So we've been able to implement that phase of the program to this point. The one where we're still waiting for more guidelines for USDOL is related to independent contractors. So I'm going to plug up my computer. The one where we have not received guidance, or as much guidance yet, is regarding independent contractors and self-employed professionals. These people, the CARES Act does provide benefits for, but because of the fact that individuals or independent contractors or self-employed have never engaged with the Department of Labor before, has never had wages reported quarterly to the Department of Labor like a traditional employee would, it requires not only new and different guidance from USDOL as to how we would be able to implement that, but also will require us to change our systems in order to add some different questions that in the past we would typically have to ask of an individual applying for unemployment. Just to give you some background, a traditional employee, their employer, as you know, files taxes quarterly to report the wages of their, their workers, and they report to us quarterly to provide that information. So we have that information in our database and so we don't have to communicate with other government agencies to verify a person's wages. For independent contractors or self-employed workers, there does not exist a system other than the IRS. It may be, of course, state revenue where information about their wages to verify their earnings are readily available to us. So now require unemployment offices to do something that we've never really had to do, which is have a full-throated communication for each individual who is applying with the IRS or State Revenue Office in order to verify their wages. Like I said, this creates a totally new system than what states have been responsible for trying to work on while we're providing benefits to workers. So needless to say, regardless of the fact that Congress passed it and the President signed it, it's still going to have to be, the program is still going to have to develop and we don't have any insight as of yet from USDOL as to when that is going to be. So currently, if an independent contractor applies for benefits, it will come back if they were denied. And I understand that that's frustrating since the law was passed, but it takes more than the President's signature to implement the law.
Saran, talk a little bit about what you have done in the first couple of weeks for the restaurant industry specifically about allowing for part-time work, the no-job search, and also the no-waiting period. And then we had problems in the first week that we were able to change where if a restaurant was to lay off, you know, 50 people at once, they, they didn't have to, you know, do a letter for each person. So can you talk a little bit about working with us early on to sort of meet the immediate needs because we had, what, 11,000 restaurant workers in the first week or so come through unemployment? It was, it was not a good time for anybody.
Right. Well, just to give you some insight as to the volume, the historic volume that we've seen, as you kind of alluded to, we are, the first week that this occurred, the week before this occurred, rather, we were probably processing about 530 to 600 unemployment claims per week. The first week that this happened, we had 10,700 unemployment claims in one week. Just to give you some context, over the last 40 years, the highest number of claims that we've ever processed in a month was about 9,600. So we eclipsed our previous monthly historic high in the first week of this crisis. The following week, we had 20,000 claims and this week, we're probably going to be approaching close to 20,000 as well. So we could see an environment by the end of this week where we process over 50,000 claims within three weeks or have received, rather, 50,000 claims within three weeks. Just to give some more context, we processed 37,000 claims over the last year. So needless to say, the increase or the quick increase in volume, typically if we're dealing with a recession, we've got some time to plan and strategize in order to deal with incoming increase in claim volume. As you, you know, recessions can pretty much be well not predicted, they can be trapped, you know, pretty effectively with economists. With this, because it happened so quickly, we really had to respond pretty fast. So one of the things that we decided to do, we ended up engaging with the Delaware Restaurant Association pretty early on, as they were the initial, as you guys were the initial companies who started feeling the impact of these social distancing emergency orders. And it was really important guidance because it really helped to develop a framework that we would expand benefits in order to accommodate the needs of everyday workers who are going to be out of work. So a couple of those things that really materialized out of conversations with Kerry and your partners and other members were related to part-time workers and ensuring that part-time workers who are still going to be dedicating, who may have lost hours and wages, but are still going to be dedicating time to delivery service and other functions that the restaurants are providing to ensure that those individuals would also be able to qualify for benefits. The federal government added a little cherry on top of that, which may cause its own concerns, but they also ensured that part-time workers that would qualify under our expanded benefits would be able to receive an added $600 benefit on top of whatever they were able to generate for, in the weekly benefit, benefits from the Department of Labor. So if you've got a person who is working part-time, who may have gone from 40 some odd hours a week to now they're only working, you know, 10 hours a week, they may only qualify for $120 in support from benefits, from unemployment benefits. But they will also qualify for the added $600 in benefits that would be essentially, that would be essentially going to those workers to add to whatever wages they were making part-time. So that is an added assistance, as Carrie mentioned as well. We have been allowing employers to provide their information to the Department of Labor in a more bulk format, by emailing to our office the names and personnel payroll information that you have for the workers that you may be laying off in order for us to start processing those claims as quickly as possible without having to go back and forth with each individual one with the employer. So these are some things, there have been others, like reducing the one-week wait period right now.
Uh-oh. Go ahead, Saran.
Hey, you got it? Can you hear me? So the, so essentially, we've been able to cut the one-week waiting period so that individuals can receive unemployment benefits within, you know, within the week. So I think 65% of individuals who qualify for benefits who apply online and there's no problems with, you know, discrepancies in who their previous employer was or what their previous wages were or other information that they may have been put into the system. More than 70, 65% of individuals who apply qualify the first time and receive their first benefit within the first week of their application. So that was, that was, you know, tried to get rid of as many procedural steps as possible in order to provide that, like getting rid of the work search requirement. But again, we have to remember this is a federal, federally regulated system, maybe state-run, but it's federally regulated. So we were able to relax all of the rules that had been established by the state, but the rules and regulations that have been established by the federal government, we don't have the ability to eliminate or roll back or relax. So those things would include overpayments. So for those who may not know, for individuals who have an overpayment on their account, which means that at some point or another when they go on unemployment, it could have been three years ago, could have been four years ago, what have you, these individuals may have taken a job in the midst of generating unemployment wages and there was some overlap in that time period. They may have continued to collect unemployment benefits while they were working and otherwise ineligible. ineligible for benefits, but sometimes people don't realize that their employers are reporting this information quarterly, and so when the Department of Labor catches it, you are assessed an overpayment penalty in the amount of whatever you generated during the time period where you would not have qualified, as well as added interest and penalties. So, individuals who come and apply, who have that debt attached to them, have been receiving, their benefits have actually been garnished. So, even if you qualify for the full benefit amount, some of these individuals may have, may owe $3,500 for $1,000 to unemployment, those payments would have to be, that balance would have to be drawn down to zero in order for them to start collecting benefits. And this is from guidance from USDOL, and we're trying to get more insight as to, what we do know is that the added $600 benefit, we're trying to get feedback as to whether or not they will allow us to apply that to the debt. Right now, we have not received any insight from USDOL as to that point. So, hopefully that answers your question.
Saran, just one quick question that we're getting. Is the $600 federal number, is that retroactive to the original layoff date? And we're getting a lot of questions about, and I get it, right, about when we reopen, you know, we're paying people and sometimes they're making more money on unemployment than they would be coming back to work, so we're worried about that. What is the final date of the federal, the $600 a week? What's, is it retroactive, and then when does it end?
So, it's only retroactive to April, to the week of, to this, to this week, April 5th. It's the only time period that you could qualify for the benefit. It's not retroactive to when you apply. So, if you apply for benefits only on March 15th, and, you know, you're looking to collect those benefits, you wouldn't start receiving the added $600 until the federal government actually passed the law and implemented. Where, again, we're still getting drips and drabs of feedback if that changes along the lines, which it may, we'll receive information from the federal government, and we'll process those back payments. What people have to understand is that the federal law was not exhaustive. When people, when the government, when the Congress or any other government drafts a law, they're pretty much sending you in a direction that they wanna go, and it's up to the agencies to draft regulations to ensure that it works effectively, and that's the phase that we're in right now, where the agencies are developing regulations in order to clarify and try to meet what the, fill the gaps that the law actually left out. And so, the question of retroactive pay for individuals who qualify for benefits, we can go, again, it only starts when the federal government began, issued the regulations for it to start, which was this week, and is not retroactive to previous weeks of benefits, at least not yet.
Okay.
So, if we get more information. It's, the added $600 benefit is set to end at the end of July. The 13 weeks of added benefits, which the federal government is also allowing through this program, is scheduled to begin, or to end in December.
Okay.
I think it's also important, I think it's also important to note that aside from unemployment, individuals should be receiving in the coming weeks stimulus check from the federal government also, which I imagine would be helpful as well. Your next question, I know, was related to the practicality or potential impracticality of providing such a hefty unemployment benefit while you still have employers who are hiring? Was that the concern? Or was that the case? Okay.
It's just a lot of questions that I'm getting.
Yeah. So, again, this was, this was debated heavily on the Senate floor, I'm imagining also in the House when this was being, you know, debated. The, I think where the legislature, where Congress came down, was that it was more, that we're in kind of unique times, and so the traditional mindset of making sure that unemployment benefits are not rich enough where it would disincentivize somebody to get out of work. I don't think they thought that this situation where we're actually, we wanna encourage people to actually stay home, which is unique and rare, and we've never really looked at the system that way, that they believe that having a, you know, richer benefit will prevent people from getting out of work. I think the problem, if we identify one with that, is for essential employees, essential employers, rather, who do not pay the equivalent of what is being offered in unemployment right now to be able to compete for workers, and I think they're gonna have to make some tough decisions during these time periods when it comes to trying to balance that landfill. I'm not an expert on how they're gonna be able to do it, and I'm just saying that it's a reality that we're gonna have to grapple with, but I definitely understand that there is some concern, especially if you have a grocery store employee who is making, you know, $10 an hour. Now, because of the $400 state benefit, the $600 federal benefit, they would be making $1,000 a week, which would probably, which would be equivalent of $25 an hour if you're working 160-hour work week, I mean, work month. And so, you know, $25 an hour to be on unemployment compared to $10 an hour to work at the grocery store and perhaps be in danger of contracting the virus. I understand that people are making some really tough decisions. So, our job is just to process the things the federal government passes laws, so we're implementing, but I don't want anybody to think that, I don't want anybody to think that we don't recognize the conflict that it creates.
We certainly have a lot of members concerned, and then I want everybody on the call to know, and I'm not gonna put Saran in the hotspot, but he knows that we also, in our meetings with the Governor's Office, were very concerned as an industry that, at no fault of this industry, that, you know, we're very concerned about being penalized for increased unemployment rates when this is over. You and I have had this conversation. I know we don't really have an answer to that yet, but you can certainly talk, I can certainly tell the 100 or so people on this call that is something that's top of our sort of advocacy ask is that, you know, that we're very concerned about being penalized at no fault of our own, and I know you know that that's important to us.
Yeah, so, you know, for starters, I would say, I would say a couple of things. One, I definitely recognize the threat that exists for employers and nonprofit organizations, or nonprofit organizations are employers, but both of those parties, businesses and nonprofit organizations, when it comes to the impact that potentially this unemployment tax will have. We don't have an answer as of yet as to what the solution is gonna be in order to smooth or relax the impact that this would have, or eliminate the impact that this would have on businesses, especially as we try to crawl our way out of this shutdown, and we wanna encourage hiring so that we can get back to normalcy. It's not in anyone's interest for there to be barriers in order to accomplishing that. So, we're focused on it. There's some outstanding questions that need to be answered as to what the federal government's role is gonna be in helping us and helping states, who are all collectively dealing with this at the same time, to ensure that we don't have to raise taxes on businesses, or that it's much easier for us to provide revenue back to the unemployment trust fund to protect workers, while at the same time ensuring that we don't have to ensure that that full burden is placed on businesses who ended up in this situation in no fault of their own. So, there are some outstanding questions that still need to be answered. I will say this, that the, the impact of this crisis will not hit the unemployment tax experience factor for employers until we reassess those, which happens every October, and then those payments aren't due until, I think, sometime in January or for that period. So, I think what's important to note is that we still have some time to provide information as we are to the Governor and to the legislature as to recommendations and options that they may be able to adopt to address that issue or that concern.
Okay. I'm gonna, you know, I think what I'm gonna do here, 'cause I'm getting a lot of calls from, or I mean, a lot of questions from people, I'm gonna keep you on right now. Damian, I'm gonna hold off on Division of Small Business for a second while I have Saran. Let's do a couple of these questions directed to Saran, and then we'll move on. So, I'm getting a question, Saran.
Kerry, real quick, there was one question that you asked that popped up, and I don't think I really hit on it enough, but the question is about businesses will fail, it's from Alex, because they cannot find employees after we open the economy back up? And I think that it's important, I think it's important to recognize that if we were to be opening the economy back up, in theory, the idea is that we would also be eliminating or relaxing the, all of the state of emergency requirements, and a lot of these added benefits are solely based on state governments deeming themselves as, you know, in the middle of a state of emergency. So, once that is lifted, I do not expect that businesses will have to compete with these programs. These programs that we've established are only established as a result of this state of emergency and have not been etched into state law to continue beyond it. So, if the idea is that we are reopening the economy, then I would imagine that that also means that we will be eliminating the state of emergency, therefore, we will revert back to some sense of normalcy. Now, we just need to make sure that the federal government sees it that way, and that they don't have a mandate that we provide these benefits, but from the way we read it, these benefits are only applicable under the state of emergency, and if the state of emergency is lifted, then the benefits are no longer true. So, you should have to. So, you should have to.
Yeah, I understand that. Let's hope that we can reopen for business sooner rather than later, something else that we're very interested in. One question I did wanna get, Saran, is from, somebody has asked, "Our employees have been receiving recall letters from unemployment that states that their benefit will stop unless they contact unemployment to appeal. Can these letters be stopped until the date we are able to reopen?"
So, is this related to an employer who has not yet responded? I'm trying to figure out what this, what this is related to. How about this? How about for this one, 'cause it seems like it's very specific to this business, unless, you know, we're getting more of these like this, but I'm trying to really get an understanding of what it is that they're saying is happening, but if you could connect them with me via email, so we could get to the bottom of what they're talking about, because recall letters for unemployment that states their benefits will stop unless they contact unemployment to appeal, the only way that something like that would happen is if the employer responded and said, "I never laid these people off." And so, there would be, there would be a determination that the person wasn't laid off with cause, and we would respond to that person and say, "I'm sorry, your unemployment benefits were not upheld," or the employer is challenging your benefits, so we would have to go to appeal in order for you to appeal that decision. But if the employer isn't challenging the unemployment, or even if the employer doesn't respond to our outreach regarding the employment, then the claim is processed, and we assume that the records that we have in UI are correct, and the employee, we side on the side of the employee, that they, you know, left that job, you know, under the proper guideline. So, I don't know why they would receive some type of a challenge unless the employer challenged their request for unemployment in some way.
Mary Ann, I know you're asking that question, and you're muted. I'll connect you directly to his office so we can resolve that specific issue. This is an interesting one, and this will be the last one I ask for you, Saran, and then we can settle up on the back, 'cause we're taking a lot of time on this, and I get it, right? Everybody has questions, and so it's not as easy as just going truth-wise. This is really for our seasonal restaurants downstate. It says that we are having a lot of people who were collecting unemployment in the off-season, and now it's the time that we would normally recall them. Are their, their benefits are exhausted from collecting in the wintertime, but now that we can't call them back, some are asking if unemployment will be extended for them throughout all of this crisis.
So, again, unemployment has extended, for the state of Delaware, you get 26 weeks on unemployment. Federal government has added another 13 weeks to unemployment, which brings us to 39 weeks that an individual could have on unemployment, and there is no, yet, any plan to extend it beyond that.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Let me, if you'll hold tight, 'cause we wanna take some more questions at the end, let me just go now to talk a little bit about the help loans from the Division of Small Business. Damian, I know that you're on the phone. I'm gonna unmute you now. To give us kind of a little update, I wanna let you know that he's been working around the clock to try to find solutions for small business by offering these help loans for our industry, the hospitality loans. At first, we knew it really wasn't working with the 1.5 cap in annual sales. I think it was about a week and a half ago, Damian, you were able to raise it to 2.5 million as the cap for annual sales. As the DRA, we sent him, I know Ray reached out to all of you to get your annual sales volume so that we can move the goal, move the cap up. At this time, Damian, I know that we're still having challenges. I don't think that there's been a lot of money that's gone out the door. A lot of restaurants have not received funding, maybe some have. Can you talk about what's happening, maybe some of the challenges, the errors in the applications, and how we can work to get you more people and more applications that can get some money because it's necessary?
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm not gonna talk too much about the specifics of the program unless people have questions, 'cause I think, Kerry, you did a really nice job of recapping it there at the beginning, the terms of the loan and what kind of things it's gonna cover. We did raise the cap to 2.5 million. As of right now, just to give you guys a sense of where the program is, we've had about 400 applicants for the help loan. About 50% of those applicants have been restaurants, so we've got 200 applicants that are restaurants. The program opened, I believe, March 20th, 20th, on the dot is when the application went live. I think we started getting applications mostly on the 23rd, though. We issued our first loan that Friday. I should have a calendar up in front of me the way I'm talking about these dates. March 27th is the date our first loan went out the door. We've been issuing loans each day since then. We've now processed about, I think about a quarter of the applications that have come in over this three-week period. Our processing time on an application is about two weeks right now, which is a little bit longer than I'd like it to be, so we're actually bringing in some additional support in the underwriting phase to try to speed that up. Our target was, on this, was about seven to 10 days to underwrite and get the money out the door in the hands of the applicant, and hopefully by adding this additional support, it'll bring us a little bit closer to that target. We did expand it to other industries, but it remains primarily the personal care services, cosmetology-type businesses, but it primarily remains heavily utilized by the hospitality industry, and I think I mentioned this, but 50% of our applicants have been restaurants. The thing that, one of the things we're looking at is an opportunity to create a fast track within the program. The thing that is delaying applications right now is just having to go through, two things, really, having to go through an application that just doesn't have all the information we need. We're having our business manager, we have five, four business managers who cover the state, follow up the people directly to get the information we need. That's allowed us, we started kind of kicking those applications out for follow-up more quickly on the front end, which has allowed us to focus on the applications that do have the materials we need in our underwriting process, which has helped move them along a little bit. But again, adding the additional support, I think, will get us to our target timeline in terms of processing. The main thing to just stress to you guys, what we need in order to get an application processed as quickly, quickly as possible, we need three things. We need a balance sheet for fiscal year 2019, or sorry, calendar year 2019, most people's fiscal year is January, December, calendar 2019. We need an income statement for calendar year 2019, and we need an invoice of the bill you're applying for, a loan for, and records that that bill has been paid at least 80% of the time over the last year. The easiest way, the thing that holds most people up, probably unsurprising to folks on this phone, is the record of 80% payment over the last 12 months. The easiest way to verify that for us is to send us a letter from the person that the money is due to, in the case of like a lease payment, it could be your landlord, on their letterhead that says, you know, borrower or tenant X has been current at least 80% of the time, or has been. borrower or, or tenant X has been current at least 80% of the time, or has been current all 12 out of the last 12 months. We will accept that. That's sufficient to prove to us that we can trust that you're meeting that, that requirement. Um, absent that, uh, if your landlord won't do it, or if it's for a utility bill or an insurance payment, and it's just you're dealing with a corporation, it might take a long time to get a letter like that. Um, you can submit us a ledger or a record of payment. We won't accept, um, like an Excel spreadsheet. Some people have been sending us Excel files that they internally use to track payments. Um, it needs to be something that is official, that has been turned over to a bank, something we can verify that hasn't been tampered, um, if that makes sense. The vast majority of people are not trying to defraud the program, but we need to make sure that we're issuing money only to people who we can authenticate, meet the criteria. Um, I think the other thing that's been holding people up is sometimes folks don't have, um, they think they might need audited financial statements. Um, we don't require audited financial statements. Uh, you're, you're gonna sign off on this thing, uh, that everything you're presenting to us is truthful to the best of your knowledge. Um, and so, we'll take the internal financial statements if you pull them off QuickBooks or something like that. Um, and then again, if, if, if we discover on the back end, down the line, that something was given to us fraudulently, we can, we can take further action at that point. But again, the vast majority of people are, are very honest, and we don't want to hold up those people by putting in a bunch of, of needless checks, uh, on the front end. So, that's how the program works. Um, one key thing to make sure is very clear is we do follow the SBA affiliation rules for our revenue guidelines. Um, so that means if it's a restaurant group, um, we are going to consider the restaurant, the revenues for that restaurant group in its totality. Um, one of the things that has been slowing down the process is sorting through, uh, a balance sheet for an organization, uh, or similar, and discovering that the organization that applied as a singular, um, entity has an affiliate. And so, uh, that takes some time. We've been trying to communicate that, that, that on the front end, that that is a portion of the program. The revenue requirement applies across a restaurant, a, a group, that's not just restaurants, I shouldn't say it like that. It applies across a group. Um, so, we had a network of hotels come in and apply. Um, each hotel individually, uh, would have met the revenue requirements, but at, in its totality, um, far exceeded them. The reason we do that, I think folks who, who get the denial on that grounds, um, are, are frustrated. And I, I understand the frustration. The reason we do that is because we are limited in the amount of resources that we have available to us. And we're really trying to concentrate on the smallest folks in the subset industries that we're targeting because we feel those folks are gonna have the most difficult time, um, getting a loan through another avenue. Um, we'd love to have the resources to give loans out to many more people throughout Delaware who are no doubt struggling. Um, but given what we have available, we've had to kind of pick and choose where we're targeting, and then push the other folks toward the SBA loans, to the PPP, um, and to the emergency, uh, the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, the EIDL loans. Um, if you need any help figuring out.
Damian, just a quick question. In defining a group, is there a percentage of common ownership you're looking at?
Um, we use the SBA guidelines. I don't have them in front of me because I, my, my underwriting group, uh, knows them far better than I, but that's the easiest way to do it. Um, we also, it also includes if you've got, you know, separate, um, employment, uh, data. You, you, they can be pretty separate entities, but if there's a, if there is common ownership, I believe it's about, it, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's about 25 to 33% common ownership that defines an affiliate group. Um, we find that using those guidelines is the easiest way. Um, one, because some people are familiar with them, and two, because, um, that way we're, we're not out there creating our own set of guidelines and then having to legally defend them. Um, the SBA has had these in place for a long time. So, we apply them. Um, they are pretty strict in terms of, uh, of what constitutes an affiliated group.
Okay, okay. I, um, listen, I want to thank you. You've been working with us around the clock as well, trying to get creative. I'm not gonna lie to the group. I have, I have worked with Damian and asked him for every week, I think, to continue to raise that cap above the 2.5 million in annual sales. Damian, do you think that any of this federal stimulus money coming into our state will be sent to the Division of Small Business to be used for grants at this time for small business? Because what we need in this industry, right, where I keep telling people, we are not like furniture stores or tattoo shops, right? We are, we need liquidity, and even when we open, uh, you know, right now, many of my restaurants are on COD with their suppliers for food. So, it's not, it's not easy to open without money, uh, if we, if, if a lot of these people even make it that far. So, are we going to be receiving federal stimulus funds directed, in your opinion, towards small business relief and grants?
So, we continue to advocate for that. Um, I think our delegation, oh, let me first say, by the way, Carrie is not lying when she says that she's advocating for this. Um, I, I, I mean, I, I get along very well with Carrie, uh, but she is, she is a fantastic advocate for her industry. No, 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 I appreciate the advocacy. Um, but she is not shy about, uh, about reaching out to me and, uh, and making her, her opinion known, which is, which is, I think, you know, as, as an industry group, what you, what you want in your advocate. Um, so, uh, where, where was I? On the stimulus package, in the last stimulus package, there was not a lot, um, for state, uh, economic development. Uh, they focused a lot on the, the payroll protection plan. I think that was the main vehicle through which they were trying to reach small businesses. Um, my hope is that, I mean, the payroll protection plan is, is a, is an interesting program. I think it's gonna help a lot of businesses. I also think a lot of businesses are gonna be left out, um, which I think is what some of the folks at the federal level now are, are realizing. Um, and I think the best way to reach those folks, I continue to make this, this known to, to the proper people. I think our delegation certainly gets it. Um, the best vehicle through which to get resources to that, that kind of next group down that is a viable company, uh, or was a viable company prior to the, to the pandemic, um, but is now in danger of going out of business, um, remain state, state economic development offices. Uh, we can get the money out quickly. Um, I think we've, we've shown, shown that with, uh, with our help loan program. And, uh, so if we were to get, there's, right now, a fourth relief package being debated. Um, there's a little more interest this time in, sorry, I didn't know if I got disconnected. I got a, did, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay. There's a little more interest, I think, this time in, in exploring, uh, giving the money to the states. Uh, we'll see what happens. If that happened, um, we'd certainly move to, uh, to make our support, uh, more robust than it is now.
Yeah, and, and I agree that the way to go really is through your office because right now those PP, we don't know when these PPP loans are coming in. We're at a standstill. And, and what I'm trying to communicate to Damian, to the gov, we have a call with the governor again on Monday, is in essence, every single restaurant, when we open, will be a startup again. And so, any of those, so grants are key, and that's something that's really.
Yeah, and to your, to your point, Carrie, uh, one thing we've been looking at, because, you know, if we look at the timeline for this, the next stimulus package, probably not gonna be passed, um, until mid to late April at the best, at the earliest. Um, I guess we're already almost in mid-April, so probably late April. Um, so, one of the things we've been looking at, as, as we have been advocating for money to the, to the state, um, economic development authorities, which is, was, what organizations like ours, um, is that they, i- if it's not gonna be for mitigation efforts now exclusively, um, that they consider doing it for recovery efforts. Um, and, and I think this, Carrie, you know, would be a great area for you guys to kind of make us known, you know, what the needs of the industry are. I think what I've been hearing is that inventory repurchase is gonna be huge for the restaurant industry because a lot of your spare cash, to the extent you have it, um, is going towards just keeping yourselves in your buildings right now, um, or keeping your staff on, on some form of, of payroll. Um, and so, when we do open up, there's gonna be obviously a need to ramp up to provide the service that you were providing two months ago. Um, and having cash to do that's gonna be important. So, um, that's certainly an area we're looking at as well.
Thank you. And then, uh, again, I just want to, you know, thank you again. Let's, uh, let me see if there's another question coming in. Um, uh, this is from Jeff Cook. Say I use WISFIS and I have a loan already. If I have a personal guarantee with them on that loan, is the, is loan still forgiven from the feds? That's a PPP question, I think.
Yeah, I don't, that's a pretty detailed, though it does raise something I forgot to mention, Carrie, which you asked me to mention just because there has been confusion with all the different loan products out there. Our loan does not require any kind of collateral to be put up by the borrower, or does not require any kind of personal guarantee. Um, our goal is to try to get the money into the hands of the people who need it as quickly as possible. Um, I'm not gonna pretend asking for those things would provide us more assurances that we'd be able to collect on our outflow. Um, but I think our primary goal is to try to save as many, uh, many of these applicants as possible. And we know speed's important there, and, and those things tend to slow things down and, and maybe kick people out who, who would otherwise be good borrowers.
Well, maybe what, what I'll have you do, and we'll, we'll stop there. What we'll do is, why don't you send us everything that, that these, this, this industry needs to provide you in order to execute an application quickly? I'm hoping, Damian, that we can work together to soften some of this verification process because if we're looking for sort of 12 months of verification, it's sometimes very difficult for this industry to find it. So, what are some ways we can work with you to provide some sort of verification that maybe isn't as, uh, you know, cumbersome and bureaucratic for some of these people to get? I think you outlined some of the ways, but if we can articulate that in writing, I'll make sure I can get that out to the group.
Great.
Okay. Um, let's just move on. Uh, I want to talk a little bit, we can come back to more questions, although we're quickly coming to the end of this call, and I, and I promised I'd have everybody off. But, um, can we talk a little bit? Raylan, will you give just a, a Reader's Digest version of our DE Eats Relief Fund for workers? Because this is an area that we can get quick cash to displaced workers here in Delaware. Uh, Raylan, I'm not, I'm not.
Absolutely.
Unmute yourself, Raylan. Okay. Yep?
Perfect. I'll keep it short and sweet. Um, so, we, the DRA, through our 501(c)(3) educational foundation, we formed the Emergency Action Trust, also known as our DE Eats, to activate immediate emergency funding to our displaced employees in our industry up and down the state of Delaware. Um, we are providing a maximum amount of $500 to individuals. Um, we have officially raised, I'm very happy to report, $112,000, um, and six, $112,695,000 in donations. Uh, we also had a really big kickoff, um, donation from Dogfish Head of $50,000, as well as from an anonymous funder of $16,000. And then Touch of Italy, Rehoba Foodie kicked in $15,000 in the very beginning to start us off. So, we're very, very happy, um, with the beginning of this. As of today, we have received 940 applications in the queue, and we are currently able to approve 220 applicants for the first two rounds of funding. The first 176 applicants will actually be receiving their funding by the end of this week. Um, we have, um, developed a lot of great partnerships and fundraising efforts. This Saturday, April 11th, is our most recent. We will be having a virtual run, walk, bar crawl organized by Fusion Facing Racing. It should be another great fundraiser for eats. If you have not registered, um, please consider, and we can discuss offline. Once DE Eats reaches 150,000 in donations, Dogfish mentioned that they will add in an additional 50,000 to bring us up to 200,000 in funds for awards. The fund is going strong, and we have all of you to thank for that, for donating, sharing, and keeping the hope alive. Um, so, thank you.
Thanks, Raylan. Let's go to the next, the next page. Uh, this, this is, is some of the, that's the logo for the Emergency Action Trust. You know, there's a lot of groups out there that are whining and that are complaining about their loss of business. We thought we would step in through the foundation and do something for your employees right away. And that's where we, from soup to nuts, we birthed this program within 48 hours. There's no bureaucracy at the Delaware Restaurant Association, and we hope that we can, uh, support 2,000 workers, uh, with this fund. So, let's go to the next, uh, thing. This is something that is on the Division of Small Business, if you have not seen it yet. And I, and I do know that, that there's not a lot of people going into it because they look at this, and you're right, there's been some complaints that it is a loan and not a grant, which is something that we constantly advocate for. This is, however, a 0% interest loan. So, I do think it's, it's, it's worth looking into, uh, as it offers needed funds, and it can, it happened more quickly than the federal government. But also on the Division of, of Small Business, you have all kinds of loan programs and the different loan programs available to you. And again, as far as the federal PPP, uh, I have to tell you, guys, that is continuously changing by the minute, how people are looking at it. So, I have never seen more action coming out of the National Restaurant Association than through this PPP loan and through the new regulations and through trying to change it. So, um, I, I would do it if you can, and just hopefully if they will extend it, they will forgive it, uh, and they will grant it to you. So, I would talk to your accountants about that, and then go to the next slide. This is something that we're working on through the weekend, and we'll be ready for you next week. And then we'll take some more calls for a few minutes before we end the call. So, we, listen, you all humble me every day at what you are doing for your employees and your displaced employees, and what you're doing for your communities. Um, what I don't see enough of is real help for the small business, uh, and especially our industry. There's a lot of small business out there hurting, but nobody has taken the decimating hit as restaurants have. We have 50,000 employees, and we are 2,000 restaurants strong. And every day, uh, you guys have gone to work every day until this happened to realize your American dream. And we are really going to do a push starting next week at some additional ask of the governor's office. Like I said, we're lucky. We will have a call with him Monday. Uh, we will be putting out a letter to the governor's office and to our legislature next week. At this point, I don't know if you know who your legislators are, or if you have had a chance to communicate with them. Much of this work is being done through the governor's office and his team, uh, sort of on the inside. Uh, but, but we are about to start communicating a little bit more, uh, robustly with our legislative body. They are not in session. They will have to go back in session. Uh, and they will certainly have a voice as we go forward. So, I, I need you to really follow up with your emails. Look at what we're gonna send you in the next week with an ask because we're gonna need you to communicate this ask to the governor's office and to our legislative body come next week. It's, um, again, we are in warrior mode for you all, and I don't take that lightly. So, I want to talk a little bit because we have some more questions, and one is coming. Alex, I'll take yours. I've had some calls from our beach restaurants about J1 visas. Um, I don't have the answer to that. I know that they've been pushed off to May 15th, and there's a lot of questions on what to do with visas because what, you know, when are we going to reopen? Um, actually, Verity, can I unmute you, or can you, I'll unmute Verity right now. Verity is our lobbyist, and we are working with, uh, Rhett Regirio and Associates through Verity and his, and her team to really try to communicate with the governor, the need to open earlier rather than later. Um, let me see if I can, if I can pull her in to hear what she's saying.
She can unmute herself.
Or Verity, you might be able to unmute yourself. Well, if she can, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll make the point. You guys, I don't know when we're gonna open up. Um, we continue to communicate with the governor. Uh, you know, it was, it was, it's his plan to, to say May 15th, but we're already seeing states in our region, uh, push their dates ahead. Uh, we will continue to urge the governor to open as soon as they can, and soon as that May 15th date, uh, based on what he says is the science. Um, we're working with them now, and that's just something that we will continue to ask. I do not know if, uh, if, you know, what's gonna happen with the J1 visas at this point. I just don't have that answer. So, as soon as we know, you know, we'll talk more. Uh, there was a question that came in that said, what is your opinion on how much longer restaurants will be closed for indoor seating? I really, if we follow what's happening in Europe, they're beginning, in some respects, to open up commerce, but restaurants still are not being reopened. You know, we were the first to be closed. I don't expect us to be the first opened in full without some restrictions. Uh, but we are, we are working with the governor's office to try to have that not happen. Listen, I think there's gonna be social distancing from the public without special restrictions put on us. So, uh, we continue to communicate the need to be open for business to the governor's office. And I'm working with a coalition of other business groups on that as well. It doesn't seem that any are too, um, aggressive at, at getting us to be reopened soon. So, we'll continue to talk about that. Uh, there's another question that says, has there been any indication from the governor or from the Department of Health as to how they will handle the reopening of restaurants? Meaning, do you think there will be, or do you have any indication that will be mandatory inspections prior to reopening? I know we have Jamie Mack and Sandy Spiegel. Uh, you might, we, we're gonna unmute them right now. And Sandy or Jamie, you might want to just address what's happening from public health perspective. I do know that coronavirus does not sit within the model food code. Uh, it's not something that they inspect for. And I know everything that you're doing, uh, Sandy, within the Division. uh, Sandy, within the Division of Public Health, are recommendations for the industry, but you might want to just say a few words about what's happening and about reopening, and if there's any conversations.
Sure. Um, Jamie, did you want to go first, or would you like me to?
Um, you can go ahead.
Okay. So, uh, one thing that we have been seeing over and over again from the CDC is that there's no indication that this illness is foodborne. It's not included in our regulations, um, the Delaware Food Code as a reportable foodborne illness, and therefore, we're not going to require inspections before reopening. Um, my best recommendation for anybody who's looking for answers is to go to our de.gov/coronavirus webpage. There's a section for businesses, so you hit that tab, and about three-fourths of the way down are some frequently asked questions. Inside of there, I think you'll find most of the answers to the questions that people are asking. What do you do if you find that someone, a customer or employee has tested positive for COVID-19? Um, you'll find the answers in there about whether you need to hire someone to clean, and then about reopening. And so, those answers are, um, if you find that someone has tested positive, the first thing you need to do is, uh, shut down the restaurant. The CDC is recommending that you leave the area for 24 hours to allow the viral count to minimize to levels that are safe to be cleaned by staff. And the staff that should be cleaning are ones that are well, so nobody who's been in contact with the person who tested positive. Um, in some instances, I know that restaurants are running on a skeleton crew, and what that means is, when one person tests positive, that means the restaurant is going to shut down in its entirety for 14 days. But there are some folks that have the opportunity to bring in staff from another restaurant that hasn't been impacted. So, a chain is able to bring in people from the outside, from another business, and obviously, you have the ability to bring in whoever you want, as long as they haven't, um, been in contact with that ill, uh, food worker or customer. So, then, when it comes to cleaning, you can always hire someone to come in and clean, but if you have your staff do it, you want to make sure that you're using the CDC recommendations, and the link to that is in the FAQ. Um, it tells you what chemicals to use, what proper PPE to use. In conversations with some business owners and understanding the dynamic of small businesses, I know that people are operating with skeleton crews, and what that means is, the person who's cleaning that day, when they come back in after the business has been closed for 24 hours, is likely going to be the person that then works. So, I suggest that people bring a change of clothes and ensure that they can, you know, remove the disposable PPE, put on clean clothes to be in the food establishment. And once the restaurant has well people, people that haven't been told to quarantine in the food establishment, they're allowed to reopen, we do ask that the person in charge of the establishment call our call center, um, and that is on every piece of paperwork that we've put together, but it is 1-866-408-1899. And that's just to get recommendations from our epidemiologists on what people should be doing. We ask that just the person in charge call instead of everybody in the food establishment, so as not to overwhelm the call center. Um, but likely, what you'll see is the precedent is set for anybody who came in contact with a person who tested positive, need to self-quarantine and monitor. Um, and then, once those 14 days are up, if they haven't experienced any of the symptoms, then they're allowed to go back to work. Those recommendations are being made through the call center, though.
Okay, Sandy. Thank you.
Do you have-
Yeah, sure. Yeah, what is the link again for the guidelines?
Okay, so, the guidelines, if you go to de.gov/coronavirus, you're going to see a tab that says Businesses. If you click on that, about three-fourths of the way down are all the FAQs and documents I've been putting together for food establishments.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. And I know, Maria, you want to jump in just on ADA requirements really quick. We're going to do about 10 more, five more minutes of questions, and then what I'm going to do is, everybody who's putting questions up on the group chat, I'm going to have you guys email me personally your questions, and I'm going to answer them personally. Go ahead, Maria, why don't you just, uh, jump in really quick?
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. Uh, everyone, this is Maria Clyde. I'm the Director of, of Human Resources for BHI. I just wanted to make a quick note about, um, how careful we need to be about disclosing, identifying information about our employees who do test positive for COVID. Uh, according to the Americans with Disabilities Act, there's privacy rules there that restrict employers from sharing personal health information of an employee, so please, please do be very careful about that. Uh, you should inform employees that there was a possible exposure, um, so employers should do that, uh, that there was possible exposure, uh, exposure in the workplace without disclosing any identifying information. So, I just wanted to, to make sure that everybody was aware of that.
Thanks, Maria. And I just want to answer one question, and then I'm going to, I'm going to send it over to Verity on another question, and then we'll, we'll, we'll wrap it up. But, uh, I know people are really struggling with whether or not to take the PPP loan. Again, I cannot tell you what to do. I know that the concern is the eight-week period for the loan. I think I said in the beginning of the call that through our partners at the National Restaurant Association, we sent a letter, uh, to Congress today urging them to extend the eight-week period through December 2020, and then change the 75% of payroll mandate to roughly, to 50%. Um, those are sort of what's, that's happened today. So, you know, again, it's something that you're going to have to discuss with your accountant and, and, and look at your own business to make a decision on that. The other question came, I know people are concerned with the recent mandates, uh, regarding ice cream parlors, that they would have only drive-throughs, uh, a drive-through-only service. You know, our operators, can we expect more carryout restrictions, uh, in restaurants? And Verity, do you want to make a, just a, a comment on what we're, what we think is happening with added restrictions from the governor's office?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. So, yes, I mean, listen, I've been talking to, Damian's been very helpful. Everyone in the governor's office has been very accessible to us and our concerns. Um, I think as we see the rate of infection increase, and depending on what states around us are doing, um, I know some states around us have shut down construction. I don't necessarily foresee there being more shutdown on the restaurant side of things. I mean, curbside deliver, curbside takeout and delivery, I mean, I don't see anyone taking that away. We're not seeing that around the country, that that's happening. As, as the, um, woman from Public Health mentioned, this isn't a foodborne, foodborne illness. So, we are not anticipating that that will occur, but that's obviously something that we're keeping a close eye on. And in terms of the ice cream stores, we can certainly, um, dive into other options, because I know they are mainly small businesses as well, um, and we can certainly explore other ways, um, maybe takeout or delivery for them as well.
Okay. And any, you know, from an advocacy perspective, Verity, how important are these meetings, and how important is it for everybody in, in, as a member to stay engaged with what we're doing?
Oh, it's incredibly important. Um, I mean, Carrie, you can attest to this. Every conversation we have with an elected official, a cabinet secretary, someone on the governor's team, we're learning new information, and we're quickly able to adapt. Unfortunately, there's a lot of questions that don't have answers, and I know that doesn't make anyone feel good, and I don't like not having answers either, um, but this is just the world that we live in, and so, having that access and those relationships right now, so that you can talk through, well, you know what, this restriction says I can't do this, but let's talk through why I can't, and maybe is there wiggle room there? Um, we have not had a door slammed in our face at all, um, and that is because of our advocacy.
Almost.
Almost! But we opened it back up.
I almost did.
And, and we opened it back up together, and I think it's very important, moving forward, that we get even more involved on the local and smaller levels, because relief isn't just going to come from the state as well, so let's keep this in mind, too. We've got county governments, we've got local governments, as well as state and federal. So, I think we need to start getting creative and start engaging on numerous levels, and that's, and that's business owners reaching out directly to their elected officials, um, at all levels of government, and informing them, and talking to them about what you're experiencing.
Thanks, Verity. I, I want to kind of wrap up and say that if you do not know who your legislator is for your home or for your business, reach out to Alexa on our team, and the email was on the first slide, and she can find out who it is, and I think it's important to make a connection. Many of you, I'm looking at the call, already do that. Also, seeing some members that have come in, uh, because of what's happening, uh, and so, I want to thank you again, and I want to thank all of you for being members. I can assure you that this has not been an easy process for us, on the team, but we're really driven by you all and your needs, so continue to reach out to me specifically. You know, it's, uh, the first week of shutdown, I was amazed that restaurateurs like yourselves were texting people in the middle of the night, including me, and that we were all answering back. And it really does show the, sort of, the gravity of the, of the problem and the challenges we're having. Um, and I feel that, and I'm, I, it weighs very heavily on me, like I said in the beginning of the call. So, I've taken a lot of your time. Please reach out to me personally with the questions. I'm going to save the questions that you've typed in here. Uh, I wanted to thank Saran. I know he had to jump off for a call. Uh, I know, Damian, thank you. We continue to have conversation, and we continue to, uh, talk about ways we can make this process more robust, especially in the form of grants for the industry. And I want to thank our partners at BHI. I want to thank John. Maria, thank you. Don't forget, next week, you'll get information on a legal webinar with Saul Ewing. Those of you who have come to our, uh, fast-forward events know that, uh, Deana and Gary are excellent when it comes to looking at things from a legal perspective. And again, you know, from our team, we'll continue to, to give you the latest information I have. All of these comments, yeah, and then BHI, John, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'd say that we are, we are working to get a, uh, webinar scheduled for next week, uh, surrounding the PPP program, so when we get the date finalized, I'll send Carrie the information, so we can extend that invite to the DRA members as well.
You know, the one last thing I want to talk to you, I've been talking to our elected officials about other ways that we can get direct grants to you. One thing that we're exploring now is the possibility and reasons why we can or cannot tap the rainy day fund. I don't know of any other time in our history where there might be a time to get some direct access to cash to you, uh, through a fund like that, and so, that is, that's top of mind. Continue to talk to me, email me, call me. Uh, my cell phone number, when you email me, is in the bottom of my signature, and I, I'm taking calls from any of you. Uh, so, thank you again, and I want to thank my team, uh, for all the hard work they're putting in on your behalf and on your people's behalf. So, again, thank you very much, and this, I think, will be available, I didn't swear at least, this will be available after today for you guys to look back and, and listen to again. So, thank you so much, everybody.[1713.54]